Welcome to the City Griffin Board of Commissioners, April twenty five, two thousand and twenty-three. We're opening a meeting with the pledge led by Commissioner McCord, followed with the invocation by Commissioner Truman Tinsley the third. Please join us.
Please face the pledge. Our pledge is made in the name of the United States of America, and the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, every being, justice for all. Most questions have been fathered. We're here today to ask you blessings and guidance on our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us recognize and solve problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just in the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep this down to the team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen. Thank you.
We have the agenda that's been presented. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Brock with the motion. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. We have two press proclamations tonight. One is proclamation for Georgia City Week twenty twenty-three. The other is proclamation for Drinking Water Week and Water Professionals Appreciation Day. So start off by doing the Georgia City Week. So with all the city employees want to come up and join us.
We have a proclamation today for Georgia City Week, Lightening the Way, April twenty-three, between nine, two thousand and twenty-three. For additional things for the city group, lightening the way, this process of boarding the public transportation. The amount of the show presented throughout the city, the many services that are about. When the city week is called online, that's the latest public work, the House City Government, work, work. Thank you for the citizens on how city state is in the wild and roll of the state government and championing the fatherly life and the youth. The things lightening the way, the structural, hearing play, you said, different times and hope. Whereas the main thing that part of Georgia, the part of Georgia, Griffin will celebrate, what's the name of it? Publicity, say, on the government aspect, what's the Griffin's goal? Things provide services to new instructors, to help visit shows, to stay present for families and individuals who can gather together. Georgia City Week began on Sunday between early two thousand and twenty-three, the Hilton's fall in airport, the city's best flying. Thousands gathered during the Sunday night call, taking the inside, new folks at the airport. The week will continue to recognize in all seven cities of the board as the first. Forest National Awards members of twenty-three, who were hardworking and many words well, twenty-three, twenty-four. Forest National was held to celebrate months in monitoring those places to serve the community of Griffin. Public works, glad they can tolerate for the choice, this day, and end their love on a new school film on what they do for peace. On those days of point seven, three, four, eight, two, five, even thirty. Since we've been by, it's a unique walk party of cabinet, when Griffin filed that request, one, and then three different states of health. The walk party will include a three-part off-plant, any strong music, and a public, and a dependent structure. Throughout the way, lots of the city employees have already discovered, most of the, the, uh, maximized. Resources, work, or programs, facilities, financial assets, provide the greatest possible and best activity of city of Griffin. Now therefore be resolved that the boarding committees have been given the free for the city on two thousand and twenty-three. And Georgia City is to be three of them, and so all children, the ones that the people participate in, the one more. About experience and talent operators, that believe in standing several sides to recognize the many opportunities the city group can provide. And in time, it will be to a better part of life than it is. The fourth initiative, if I was going, that's how good this parking actually spread on me, that it is a city that is poor. As far as that, seeing the city that he is a fellow, since maybe fifty-one of April, in the newer hallways, two thousand and twenty-three, that that was over the mayor's, still to the best of his product. So congratulations and thank you for all you do, Danielle. You are professional. You don't think much of that. Thank you all for your service. If you're finding like. And this time. Water professionals, y'all stay out there with us. To our next, talking about this, Claire, May, seventh, thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three, drinking water, two thousand and twenty-three. Stories, many ones, two thousand and twenty-three, water detectors, predicament. Where water is on most valuable natural resource, you have filthy waters that follow roads, daily life, serving simple purpose, health, hydration, hygiene, is always life. That's the thing, that's the thing, you know. Where the tap water bill is probably selfish, that's the fact, that's the first part of the water, why is that? Where is hard work performed by these high water detectors team, designing data projects, ensuring the safety. Always been taught, and then seeing the others, what they need to watch. The French door, five, probably the same waters, that the source is continuing to pass. Where is the coronavirus, who then has done the water, and the story of drinking water, health, hydration, and hygiene. Where we are all still into the water, in this place, never stop it, upon return, these simulations, teams. And the vision of Griffin, upon it's own, like the test, our spirit, for the creation, of the water contract, to get involved, to the water, mineralizing, that's it. Now therefore, this is our, what is going to be, everybody. Thereby, those who themselves, two thousand and twenty-three, drinking water, twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. When it was about to be, things just, you know, all the cities, both of us, and more waters. And waiting for, trying to let you, this important, to be welcomed, by the people here.
Name and address for the record.
And therefore people who are not aware, I just wanted to give those to them. As we're determined that the fourth law and the other is divided in two ways, emergency space. And due to the action of that, it's going to be on the one thing that we see as permanent. So the first is definitely what you need to do is 10 years of our three thirty days following the hospital. What emergency services may afford them is other accounts and what in the enforcement. At the very age of the government, it's not more difficult and or if you have anything to do with it. Why do you feel certain you don't want to be disconnected? So when the subject is in the first party at just one year, we see now before the only. And frankly, it's kind of things being approached. So in the initial reflection, um, I think that basically. This is still saying that. There were finally established and wasn't there any mercy ability to present by the. But if this deal applies to the government has a hole, probably not also billified to the people. And how close it was to be addressed. Um, so I'm a little bit confused about that. And also I'll do is that, um. We mean, um, sorry, they know that we didn't. Uh, definitely looking at how this situation is going to be similar to others. But for those who may not be aware of the. So I just wanted to do a quick one to consideration. Um, then we do the fact that people maybe uh better do that night training. And that's the best part of the town here to let them know that this is going to happen sometimes. Um, but it's that a lot of people will be beyond that. If you go ahead and be municipal or that. Um, the other thing I want to say that and uh we had really uh for a vote. I know there's some especially things that about uh the work that we're doing for the city. Um, so my thought is that we can have a look over that. And we just want to emphasize that, um, we saw that there was considerations for uh flash ads. But that's what we do. Um, you don't feel like paying the rate of food and getting a flash ad is being with the business. Uh, at least like, but the team there's like so wants to feel able to. Um, we were also thinking about. Putting into consideration uh within the work for a community and connected to the world as well. Um, and I think it says, you know, all of the news we had that uh these satisfied uh members. In the community, when the community is in part, you know, being part of these these programs and you know, affiliation. Um, I think that if we get ready to to think that we can continue to get for people to know. Are pretty much about addressing the root of the problem. And the root of the problem is the circumstances that we don't have, the clean communities that we don't have. But we have to make sure that we're in for a good father instead of trying something fair day or a situation. Um, that's not going to excuse me for you. We don't take part in acting to ensure that I use. We have activities that they can't even do. Um, we aren't uh being led to a different. I think that drives the government to think about. How that will support the community.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Is there anybody else on my left? Like come for the board? Anybody else on my left? Is there anybody on my right side? Might come for the board? Last call. Okay. Moving into public hearings, public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions. To be considered by the city commission. Item three, receive comments regarding an amendment to the Code of Griffin article seven occupational taxes administrative fees section eighty-two dash one five one administrative fee. Increase the amount of the administrative fee director planning and development Chad Jacob will address. Welcome, sir.
Evening, um, I'm here with the city and please uh please remember the third item. Uh, one of the features that I can't even tell me that I need to uh increase up a bit. I guess now was uh made for the team to operate in that. Uh, process uh something for people that are forty hours, fifty hours, even more than two in the city of uh. Uh, the city is the project in specific I five, which in the second of the third, that's always been.
Any questions from board members? Thank you. This is a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody like to come before the board, ask any questions and make any comments on this matter? Okay, moving into item four. Receive comments regarding variances, reduce the minimum lot width, front, side, and rear setbacks within planned commercial development, P C D at. Fifteen twenty-four highway sixteen west for the Kroger company, director planning development Chad Jacobs will address.
So how to afford to file on the team and talk to the government. Uh, our support, our power, our media, our application, the middle of the panel and development, not in the planning of the staff. So the act changes is that we could maybe on the happen. The forward company that I want to show there uh to believe all of the success that we're going to keep to do. Uh, when we get this along the ladder of requirement, uh, since it was a table in my parcel, uh, for a this topic that is into the west of this. So this is part of the center, uh, what they're proposing with the service themselves, approximately from two to three times a week. Uh, so that can develop, uh, since there's actually the book that they're doing. To the state, they have to see the way that the server building, um, if you do in the area of shopping, some stuff. Uh, to business, uh, that is known for what only deserves to be supported, uh, a brief. Uh, so uh again, I said the government is expected to have an independent conference, so it has a public forum. Uh, can we go down with this recognition looking at the world of the step up with that? Uh, when we look to uh block with production at zero, uh, we are in the two following conditions. Uh, first, uh, the new building type of design with the ceiling elevation during the theater with structure. Depending on how he's taken the difference of the door, it's a four hours in one. Uh, and the backside, uh, through the elevation five to the center of the building. Uh, and finally, the government of the in further and the new one that we reported in topic about same development.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Flower, Commissioner Flower.
Um, as it pertains to parking, just because I don't understand how this works. If you attach a building to somebody else's building when there's already a lot of parking spaces, do you just get to count the ones that are present? Or because they'll be separate owners, right? So how does that work?
So we're going to have that side of the uh. And I've talked to the state for both reasons, uh, they started this in the four years, and we tried to follow it up. I think it was about to do in twenty in the.
Okay, so in theory, because they're developing on already. They're building on already developed and making benefit from the infrastructure that's already there if it seems to be sufficient. Okay. That's it.
Any other questions from board members? In this is a public hearing, does the applicant or any like to make a comment? Welcome, sir.
I'm here representing the public company to see who are seeking variance from the set out in the beginning of the law. You know, as far as it's for the destruction of our ability to do that, we're going to stay a little bit. To the system, uh, the road story is correct. And while you exactly watch the parking, and we're part of these social level activity, the queer for the literally finding them. So we're not asking for those. But in the development unit, uh, that will adhere to the team, um, in the moment that we're building and start with the stock and the seller's company. Different shares, partners, they're going to take care of all that would have to do with our fellow companies in the domain of soundable. So many teams we've been talking about for the years, because uh there's only that the leader. And the state is going to be the mental all the partners that I did, so we were sort of working on the road and building the. I have a view to um, it's only forty seven, forty and so we're nothing. I believe that the very grand and remote is so true of our purpose. And so we just did, so the lot of things, so those would be like, you know, the usual, so they were walkable, safe and whatnot. Or the more we think about, think a lot about, because we have a building in the house, that's broken, so we're going to have moments on. And yet, we never give it that twenty-fourth price. And it's always good to spend our time of these places, you know, that are for business to see that there's kind of unending. So there was a curse that you can't build the building, and we already do it with the business. So at all times, as the members have heard, the object of the whole nature structure to be seen in time. So not be sending the silverware down, but I can understand all of the other students that develop within within the court. Uh, and they're going to be plus each other, no longer important.
Okay, um, in the event that the property is vacated in the future, whether it's by selling or whatever, let's say they decide to go out of business. At that point, who does the. Who's managing the upkeep of that property?
Well, uh, the.
For that part.
Serial when I told you that we got in here with four to be within control, we're coming on there and we're working for me, somebody who is problem. We're giving off and it's simple, yes, it's probably not pretty easy. Um, you're saying what they're familiar with, I think, because of. For I'm just going to throw out and sell it, but it's not, I mean, if they didn't have anything to pass through, they would have had to pass them out. But in a lot of things, if something like, for the children, that's the deal or whatever, then you know what you could sell it. It's been letting them in their body in the middle of it. So what it does do is give them the door for first of use of retail and survival. Uh, things are servicing, hopefully, with the new method, lots of that, it's like they. Bring things together and more of that in the land of the earth. So property owners may think that property values are not only a program that I'll say that it's property that's. I'm going to buy it. Well, this property would go up three and down.
I think my concern lies in the what we see when larger shopping developments are abandoned at some point in the future. And then it turns into there's multiple owners within that development. So some of the buildings, even from an exterior standpoint, are maintained. So obviously, I understand the infrastructure of the building. But I guess I'm wondering, because there will be similar architectural elements and that the responsibility of the parking lot will be shared. Is there some language that says because it's still attached to the color store that the facade of the store will be maintained? I don't care if the the inside looks like it's abandoned, but I am concerned. Because you can see all the other developments in our community, that at some point when things change, we're left with these kind of gaping holes where. Now the person who owned it has abandoned and nobody else. So that's my only concern when we talk about um expanding is how do we maintain the integrity? Long thirty years from when things are saying.
Well, uh, I think it's. It was right.
Right.
Um, there's obviously, the government says, it's the only thing that we just need to start. Or so we need to see there and there's a filter to the water and the back of the doors and all of the. Which is probably anything to manage. Um, the certainly possible time, considering that is one of the things. Uh, so the women's movement for talking about the risk of the central to the women's.
Okay, yeah, that that would make me more comfortable, just that there's some language that says if it's vacated. If the the weeds and grass start to grow up on that new parcel, that somebody will be responsible for it in a local way and not them having a hundred grand.
If the weed and grass on the wood.
Okay. So if you have been talking about also the foundation of the community, so there's a couple of areas that most people.
Well, I know the gentleman, he was. Just the first one, we didn't need to say that it's the first time that another fellow was in the dressing room, that's another. Simple. Always in the middle, and that they can have security and that's a hundred percent. Um, because it will be. It's like a house that's powered, you gotta talk to them, they're talking to them, they're willing to take it.
Not that anybody in here wants to know, but what what did you go into?
But it's in there also, um, in the sense that. But it's in another seat out, so it's small, but it's something else that's committed to the. The only, the further it's good, because the topic tells you there's another piece of the stuff that I'm just going to.
Going out of horns here and nothing like that.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Lindsay, I appreciate it. And this is a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody else in the audience like to ask questions or have any concerns in regards to this? Okay. Thank you. Moving into the regular agenda. It's item five, consider the minutes of the city Griffin Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Murray and Tinsley were absent. We have a motion to approve. Mr. Brock with a motion. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five zero two with Commissioner Murray and Tinsley abstaining. Item six is consider an amendment to the Code of Griffin article seven occupational taxes and administrative fees section eighty-two one fifty-one administrative fee to increasing amount of the administrative fee. Miss Commissioner Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Tinsley. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item seven is consider variance or reduce the minimum lot width, front and wide, front, side, and rear setbacks within planned commercial development, P C D. At fifteen twenty-four highway sixteen west for the Kroger company. And the motion to include the two conditions that were included in the staff report. Motion Commissioner Tinsley, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Brock. Any question? Go ahead, Commissioner Flowers.
Um, Chad. Is is it at the point that they bring the development agreement to you? Is that the point where you decided, Chris, those concerns I had about going forward, or do I need to ask for that to be considered now? Okay. Okay.
We have a motion, Commissioner Tinsley, second by Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Thank you, gentlemen, for investing in our community. Thank you. Item eight is consider purchase of a blender gearbox from Goworth Williamson P, single source, the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred ten dollars. Having created wastewater treatment plant and amend the budget accordingly. We have motion to approve. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Yes, second by Commissioner Ward. Any questions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item nine is consider a master service agreement with K C I Technologies Inc. for consulting engineering services to support the city Griffin's ongoing efforts. To address treatment and compliance issues pertaining to the show free water wastewater treatment plant and the black mill land applications site. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Brock. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item ten, consider renewal of the memorandum of understanding among the city of Griffin, Spalding County, Griffin's Spalding Board of Education. And U J archway partnership and had participants in the Spalding. County archway partnership for fifty years, twenty-four and the amount of twenty thousand dollars. We have a motion to approve the memorandum. Holberg will make a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second, I will second.
Okay, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Flowers with a second and we're now open for discussion. Mr. Flowers.
I seconded it for the pure purpose of trying to observe the greater good. I am not necessarily happy uh with how archway has born, but I do understand. That it has uh facilitated our ability to communicate with the other governmental entities in the community in a way that we have not seen you before. In that vein, I have to.
Any other comments from board members? So all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. All against, like sign. Before again, so four nodes, that is, Mr. Ward, Ford, Tinsley, and Brock, no. Holberg, Flowers, and Murray, yeah. Moving to item eleven. Consider a. Consider a purported anti-lighter notice dated April third, two thousand twenty-three from Bryan Law Firm on behalf of. Alejandra Edith Morales Polgar. Who allegedly sustained personal injury in a fall on March twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. As Polgar at the time was on a playground at thirteen oh one Town Road, Griffin, Georgia. Which is believed to be Spalding County, Wyoming's high park, operated by the county park director department, over which the city of Griffin. Has no ownership, possession, or control. Do we have a motion to deny? Mr. McCord with a motion, second by Miss Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Devin, zero, second by Miss Murray. And final, consider adoption of the fourth supplement emergency resolution related to the January twelfth, twenty twenty-three disaster event. And supplementing the emergency declaration of a state of emergency and all subsequent resolution related to. Aforementioned storm event. We have a motion to adopt. This is Ward with a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Murray. Any questions or comments? All in favor of adoption?
I.
Uh, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Flowers.
Uh, I just wanted to point out that I think Dr. Jones made some fairly valid comments about some of the language in the resolution. And I would like for that to be something that we consider going forward. Um, and that's it.
Yes, ma'am. So this, this is very similar to what we did with COVID. And if you'll remember when we suspended disconnects with COVID, at some point, we felt that it was actually in the better interest of our citizens to say, look. We don't want to continue this for too long a time. You're going to get a bill that you'll never be able to repay, and then we're going to have a whole nother issue. Um, so instead, what we're asking now, and I I do agree with Dr. Jones, we need to make sure that we make this public. Um, so that people are aware. Is that we're not saying you got to come in and pay your bill tomorrow. What we're saying is come talk to us, let us know. What a reasonable payment plan is, similar to what we did with our notices for for um structures that we think are nuisances at this point. Just give us your your ideas, what you can do, and we'll work it out together. But if we continue to allow it to go on for too long, some of this will never get. Um, a citizen will ever be able to recover for that amount of bill. And and timing wise and numbers wise, we have watched it the entire time to see what those numbers look like now. Um, we're about an average number of people that are thirty days behind, sixty days behind, and ninety days behind. And we're actually less ninety days behind than we are other times sometimes. So we don't feel like it is storm related at this point. It's just sort of average business. So we did take that into consideration before we decided to do this.
Do you have a plan for how we're going to notify?
Uh, Danielle and I are going to talk about that, but but yeah, we did know that we wanted to make sure that we did that. We're just not sure exactly how we want to do that yet.
Uh, yes, I I guess the the part that stuck out to me. Can I try to be as consistent as possible? Um, if the city is still under an emergency declaration. Why why would we take it off of the citizens? It's my point. I cannot understand what you're saying. But for that reason, I would I would have to. Treat the citizens in the same way that I treat government, this me personally.
Any other comments? We have a motion, Commissioner Ward, and second by Commissioner Murray, adoption of the fourth supplement emergency resolution. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. All against, like sign. Commissioner Flowers, McCord, against five two. All right, moving into city manager report.
Yes, thank you. Um, so two things, uh, mostly pertinent to Georgia Cities Week still continuing tomorrow. Please don't forget that y'all have hosted a luncheon for our quarterly connector award winners, which are all of our employees this year or this first quarter. So January, February, and March. Um, for those that don't know, our efforts are continuing in disaster recovery. Um, we are constantly either trying to help our citizens rebuild, or we are talking with FEMA about making sure we get reimbursed. Um, so we will be celebrating everybody and all the efforts that they have made the last few months with lunch tomorrow at Historic City Hall. At eleven thirty, we hope that y'all will join us. Um, it'll be eleven thirty to two thirty. We tried to make it an extended period of time, so those that um have different. Uh, responsibilities can all come and just sort of come in shifts if they can't all come together. Uh, secondly, we did mention the community block party in our Georgia Cities Week proclamation. We hope to be able to continue with that, but based on the weather forecast, that may not occur at this point. We're going to go ahead and make that decision tomorrow so that we don't have a lot of people um left wondering what is happening Thursday evening. And I think we're going to try and postpone it to May so that we can still have a celebration, because we have a very, very uh cool mural mural by a local artist. Um, on the side of the police department now that I think does need some attention, and we need to celebrate um in that area. So we will be looking to postpone that for May. And then also thank you for participating in NIMs training today. That is something that helps us with um making sure that we are reimbursed from FEMA. And just on that note, I wanted to let you all know that I was able to meet with Senator Ossoff and Senator Warnock's offices yesterday while I was in DC for my conference. Um, had a good conversation with both of them, letting them know sort of where we were with our disaster recovery efforts. Some concerns that we had in regards to um some new processes that FEMA has established. And I think that it was beneficial for me to be able to sit down with them face to face, their staffers. I didn't get to see their senator. They were out of session yesterday. Um, but to sit with their staffers and let them know that that, you know, we're we're progressing, but still, you know. Have a few things that we'll be working out the next few months. So that's it for me.
Well, I have nothing.
Mr. Brock. Commissioner Murray. Commissioner Flowers.
No comment.
Mr. Ward.
No comment.
Mr. McCord.
Um, it's always good to see people in the audience. Um, come out to our meeting, see how we handle public business. And hopefully, we can have the guys to be advocates for our city. When do we have our next class for? City government after later day. City government academy, we just need to encourage there's more people to understand. How city government works so we can get the word out. The people understand, similar to the uh anti-lighter mode we had today about somebody filing a suit against the city. And it's not in our jurisdiction. And there's a lot of things that happen like that throughout the city and Spalding County. That if we have more advocates, uh, more and more educated public of what's going on, how it works. Um, that it would be more for us too. So thank you, thank you guys for anything.
Thank you. Commissioner Tinsley.
I'd like to say.
Over a thousand people. Excellent.
We'll take care of it.
And I just want to give a shout out to Amanda Carmichael and the Finance Department. We had our audit report this morning outstanding and our fund balance continues to grow. We received our eighteenth Haffer Award. Um, so life is good, city is financially strong, depends on our employees and our staff. Giving more diligently on the behalf of the citizens of our community. Do we have a motion to adjourn to me, Mr. Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please leave.